It doesn't make a difference.
Yeah.
Yep.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Recording in progress?
Yes.
All right, we're good. Yeah. From closed session, we had no action taken, direction given. Vice Mayor Smith, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Sir.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
We have a couple corrections on there, like just to quickly note before it's adopted.
Okay.
We had a couple issues with municide code on Friday that we've discovered over the weekend. If you look at the agenda on the regular business items, it goes from six to seven to nine. For some reason, it skipped eight, so we'll correct that to make sure it actually goes sequentially and there's not a missing agenda item. And then on number four, the action requested in the, on the agenda states approve MOU and authorize the mayor to sign where actually on the staff report, it's, it didn't transition over, but for that item, we're approving the amending of the funding allocation. The MOU has already been done, it's just a change to the funding allocation. Any questions on either of those? Thank you.
Seeing none, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda with correction.
I'll second.
Are electronic voting working?
It is not working today, sir. I will need to manually call roll.
If I, if I may, we did receive the part on Friday, I believe. We didn't feel like testing it today, though.
Okay.
So it will be hopefully correct, operating correctly next meeting.
Okay, so far on this item, I will call the roll. Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item we have is a public communications hearing of non-agenda items. Also, just for all of you that may have an agenda item, we also will ask for that at the end, at the end of the meeting, if you didn't remember to make your non-agenda item comments at the beginning. So, do we have any cards?
I do have one blue speaker card from Bill Spear.
Okay. Mr. Spear.
Thank you. Verse for this evening is 1 John 1:7, "But if we walk in the light as he is in the light, we have fellowship with one another; and the blood of Jesus, his son, purifies us from all sin." Father, we thank you for today, the gift of life, the gift of salvation. Thank you for the light, and as we walk in the light today, Lord, we pray that you would shine on us, Lord, that you would forgive us and lift us up and bless our city. Bless your church, bless all the, your servants. Bless our city council, thank you for our mayor and the vice mayor and all the council members, thank you for their faithful service as they put our city first, and we pray for that supernatural wisdom that you would give them to be able to navigate, make the right choices. We pray for their families, for their health and their finances. In every area, we pray for an overflowing, and all the city staff. Pray for our police chief and for all the police, the fire department, all the firefighters, all the first responders. We pray for all the service groups, the, all the events in our city that are getting ready to come up. We ask that you would continue to give us supernatural protection, supernatural provision, continue to grow our city and prosper it, continue to give us favor, Lord. We, your word says, "If we ask, we shall receive; if we seek, we will find; if we knock, the door will be open." And so we come this evening, seeking, asking, and knocking, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
That's all?
That's all I have, sir.
All right, presentations in honor of recognition of Gervain. Step up. I had the privilege of speaking at his service, and I really appreciate that. Would you all introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, my name is Yang, and I am Gervain's nephew.
Yeah, my name is Wang Tai, my, you said, Broden.
My name is Si Vang, and I'm Gervain's nephew.
My name is Yang, I'm Gervain's nephew as well.
Thank you all. This City of Orville is a resolution in honor of the recognition of Gervain. Whereas Gervain, a beloved member of our community, passed away recently, we find Gervain was an exceptional individual who touched the lives of many through his remarkable leadership, advocacy, and community service. Whereas Gervain served as director for the Lao family empowerment of Stockton for many years, during his tenure, he coordinated with the Hmong community throughout the United States to raise funds and successfully build the late General Vang Pow's grand statue inside the San Joaquin or Stockton fairgrounds. Whereas Gervain received a bachelor's and a master's degree from California State University Chico, and prior to his work with the Lao family of Stockton, he served as coordinator for the Butte County Community Action Agency. Whereas Gervain played a significant role in coordinating with the City of Orville and Butte County leadership teams to address various issues in the larger community of Orville, his involvement in the greater Orville community focused on racial issues and fostering understanding between the Hmong and the African-American communities. Whereas Gervain lasts service for his people as director of the Lao Veterans of America Incorporated of Orville. In his role, he collaborated with the City of Orville and the leadership team to secure a building for the Hmong community to use as a Hmong museum and community center. Additionally, Gervain played a vital role in obtaining all necessary legal documents to reestablish the organization's nonprofit status. He was also instrumental in the establishment of the Orville Southside Community Center and the Orville Riverbend Park, serving as part of the original community advisory board. Whereas Gervain was not only a great leader, but he was also a dedicated educator, father, and grandfather. His impact on this community will be deeply missed but not forgotten. The City of Orville and community was enriched by his contributions. Mayor David Pittman. Thank you all. Mr. Ballard, would you come up? Many, many people told me about Mr. Ballard's participation as basically a protege of Alberta Tracy, so it's only appropriate that he accept this resolution in honor of Alberta Tracy, the lady of Butte County. Whereas Alberta Tracy, AKA the lady of Butte County, a beloved member of our community, passed away recently, Alberta moved to Orville in the early 1970s with her first husband, Russell Guyver. Together, they developed Lakeside Market and the Oaks. Whereas Alberta served our community for 40 years, volunteering her time with the Butte County Historical Society, the Orville Heritage Council, the Republican Women of Orville, the Christian Science Church, and many, many more. Whereas Alberta was best known as Lady of Butte County, dressing up, singing, and portraying women from Butte County history and serving as the museum director for the Eamon Home Museum since it opened in 1981. Whereas Alberta started many local traditions as Perry Mason Days, Admissions Day at the Library, Liberty Pole on Montgomery, Olive Day at the Eamon Home, and the Polar Bear Plunge at Bedrock Park. Anybody join her in that Polar Bear Plunge?
Yes.
He was there every, every year. Whereas Alberta married her husband, David Tracy, with whom she moved to Paradise, California. They lost her home in the campfire, but she did not lose her sense of optimism and friendly disposition. Alberta Tracy is welcoming to all and inviting tour attendees at the Eamon Home back in the kitchen for lunch, where she would help them gain connections and resources for other local projects. Whereas the community in Orville loved Alberta Tracy, and she will be sorely missed, she certainly will not be forgotten. David Pittman, Mayor of Orville.
I would just like to say, we can't make any announcements as far officially from the Butte County Historical Society for what we're going to do to honor her, but I think it just goes to show how many people around this community she supported and made connections with, because it feels like everybody is stopping what they're doing to try and find a way to honor her. And unlike other museums, she welcomed everybody in and wanted to know what she could do to help with their community projects, because she loved this town, and she was rightfully called the lady of Butte County. That's all. Thank you.
So, Daniel? So who's going to take over the Polar Bear Plunge and wear the bloomers? She was very colorful in her red and white striped outfit and bloomers.
Well, I'm definitely not going to wear bloomers, but I will be taking over the Polar Bear Plunge. I did last year, as well as Perry Mason Days and Admissions Day and a lot of other things. We just did the Olive Festival, and that showed everyone on the board at the Historical Society, it takes an army to take over what she did.
You have a big role to fulfill, because, you know, out of all the people that visited my office regularly, she's probably right there at the top one or two.
Yeah.
So, I'll be, I'm sure seeing more of you in the future.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate the, your time and effort to participate here today, and thank the Gervain family for being here. We much appreciate it. Next is council announcements and reports. Any council reports? Go ahead.
So I do have one correction regarding the planning meeting conversation that we had at the last council meeting, and in that discussion, we talked about a couple of individuals. And in my research on those that sat on the planning commission, I reported out that there were none, in my estimation, that were involved in the building trades, and I want to make that correction, that Natalie Sheard had reached out to me and let me know, and I looked into that, and sure enough, she had been involved in the building trades. So I want to make that correction respectfully to Ms. Sheard and her service to the planning commission, we certainly appreciate that. And then further with that, one of the, my main objective or point in that was representation on the planning commission from that particular industry, and feel that it's very important that those that are in the trades feel supported by our planning, or at least that they have someone that understands their unique position. And, and so now, I guess we now have two, at least, that understand that position. So I feel that it's still, it doesn't change, and my, I think my ultimate or my, my end point to that, to what I was seeking to, to achieve with that. But I do want to make that correction, and I do apologize to Ms. Sheard in making that, that error. Thank you.
Anyone else? I've got a couple things I'll mention real quick. I attended the Butte County Association of Governments meeting last Thursday, and that's a group that, you know, finds money for roads, and they were really encouraged by our new participation in physicians field. Our Public Works Director Fred and Patrick, they were very impressed, and they're happy to see that they have connections here in Orville to get some great road projects going. So it was a very good meeting. BK was very thankful for meeting the two gentlemen, and I think you learned a lot about BK, from what I was told, it was very interesting. The other thing is, there's a score meeting, we had an update on our new inflow pumping plant, and many of you don't, I don't know what that is, but the real problem is, we had a beautiful seven, eight million dollar plant improvement, and we're sitting around waiting for computer chips to run the variable displacement pumps, and it may be more months before we can get the simple computer chips to get an eight million dollar project moving. So it's one of the difficulties we're all having in getting pieces and parts. Go ahead.
I think this is something that you should mention, because our mayor was very instrumental in sending a letter to the mayor of the city of Maui. So, thank you so much, appreciate that, and if you wanted to, you know, expound on that, we were just very grateful of your consideration and concern for the tragic thing that had occurred there.
Yeah, appreciate that. Normally, when we do a moment of silence, we just do it here, but it's been my thinking that we should send a letter to those that receive the moment of silence, and we sent a letter to the mayor, and then he actually read it at the incident briefing and was very impressed, and some of our people from Orville were actually there. They go, wait a minute.
We did?
Thank you. That was nice. Appreciate that. Administration reports?
No, I do have one more. I apologize.
No, it's all right. We don't have our queue going here.
So, yeah, no, and last, you just kind of, just sharing struck a chord. So last week, James Gallagher hosted a rally down at the state Capitol, supporting businesses, and there's a particular Assembly Bill 553 that's going through committee that will have real, I think, dampening impacts on, on small business. It's really kind of a, an anti-small business bill, at least many feel that way. And, but, not to get into all of the particulars of that particular Assembly Bill 553, you can look it up and come to your own conclusions about its impact, but what really caught my attention was, there were many, many small business folks from up and down the state, and the stories that you continue to hear, and, and one particular reoccurring theme that I heard on multiple occasions was this sense of our hands are tied. And what I really appreciated about our Assemblyman Gallagher is that, is to unleash or to help us cities and to help us in, in really kind of undoing or preventing laws that have impact on business when it comes to crime in particular, and I know there's a lot of focus on that right now, and, and I think people are sick and tired of being sick and tired about hearing excuses. But, but there is some truth, there are laws on the books that do make it challenging for our law enforcement. At the same time, that's not an excuse, but, so I'm somewhat optimistic, appreciate his hard work and his, his willingness to take up, take these issues on, but, but again, there were, there were many hundreds of small businesses represented there, and, and so we're not in this alone, there's a lot of frustration, and so, and there's a lot of pressure to bring change, you know, in particular, San Francisco has been in the news a lot, and there are small businesses leaving like crazy just because of the impacts of, of crime. And so we'll stay tuned, and hopefully we'll have greater collaboration with our Assemblyman's office on how we can help Orville and the rest of our state. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Administration reports?
Just, excuse me, just a couple quick updates from, from my desk, where you'll be expecting, and, and this is kind of piggybacks with what you were referring to with BK, we have, we've had a number of very productive meetings with, with their team, and I'm very excited about, they are, they are very, to your point, thrilled to be working with Orville at this point in time, and they are very optimistic about being able to assist us in the future, so that was very positive. But one thing, we, we did piggyback on a conversation with regards to the Highway 162 project, so we're going to be bringing an update to, to your council next meeting, so it'll be on September 19th, I believe, and just an update on, from the Caltrans perspective component, as well as the city's component, so we'll be giving you the briefing on the progress being made with regards to that. And then also, I just wanted to brief the entire council, we've had two meetings now, the second one was today on the, the direction that was given to review the city charter, so we're making some progress on that, and we'll continue to make progress until we get through it, so that's all I have. I know, Ron, you want to go next?
Hi, I'm going to update you guys, it's been a while since I've updated you on code enforcement. I want to go over a couple reports and some other stuff we've been working on. Our numbers for June, at the beginning of June, we had 498 active cases, 323 of these cases were fire-safe properties as a result of our fire inspections. We closed 125 cases and opened up 413 new cases. We abated 22 hazardous vehicles off the roadway and private property. We opened up 24 cases regarding building code violations in the city, two cases on multifamily nuisances, 40 cases on public nuisances, and two cases on substandard housing, where houses were red-tagged due to substandard conditions. July, we had a total of 233 active cases, we closed 354, a lot of those cases were the fire-safe property. We got a lot of compliance out of individuals getting their fire breaks put in and trimming trees and keeping their grass under four inches, and we opened up 76 new cases, which is kind of a typical month. We abated 17 vehicles off of the roadway or, or private property. We opened up 12 cases for building code violations, and the building code violations, a lot of these are stop-work notices where individuals didn't get permits prior to construction. Six multifamily cases, 42 public nuisance cases, and two substandard housing cases. I will give you August's report in our next council meeting, we just finished it today, and also be, next council meeting, probably through correspondence, we'll be providing you the fiscal report for 2223 for code enforcement. It's about 55 pages long, so it's, it's quite a bit to read. An update, on March, on March, I was tasked with updating the policies for the city through Lexington, we have made it through, Brian Ring and Liz Einstrom is, is helping me through that. These are weekly meetings, and meetings within the week away from Lexington, it's, it's a daunting process, but we've made it through all of the policies. We have reviewed all of our existing policies and see how they fit in the new policy manual, and as a result of that, we've also found a lot of procedures that were out there that will be in a supplemental manual. So we should be, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we should be able to get through the supplemental manual, then it will go to legal, once that's cleared, then it'll go to council for approval. City Works has been busy getting ready for the salmon festival, they've been weed eating, trimming vegetation along the levee, doing a lot of trash abatement daily from individuals that, that litter along the bike trail, abating graffiti, and getting rid of a lot of the loose rocks and stuff on the trails that lead down into the bike trail. The railroad, we opened up multiple code enforcement cases regarding railroad properties from Washington clear to George Pacific, so Washington Avenue has a railroad to Versus through Georgia Pacific. They are working on the last property now, so when you're out driving around and you're on Kittrick or Baldwin, Grant Avenue, just check out those areas, they've done a wonderful job of getting rid of all the grass, all of the trash, grazing all of the trees, getting rid of some of the vegetation that wasn't necessary. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, oh, question here.
Ron, are there any property warrants pending right now?
We have three in the hopper, so I can't disclose the properties, but we have three.
Absolutely, but we do have three. Thank you. There was a time when we didn't have any, so appreciate what you do.
All right. Oh, Amy's got one over there.
Thank you, Mayor Pittman. As most of you know, it was announced last week that the City of Orville's project, Mission Esperanza, was not funded with the 22ERF2R funding that we applied for in July. I just wanted to let the public know about that. We were disappointed, we were hoping that we would get an additional 1.7 million to expand the project. We do have one more opportunity at the end of the year to apply, and we do intend on applying, but we're not, realistically, we can't count on it based on what we've seen happen so far with the state. So the largest adjustment in this project is, we will be going from 45 pallet shelter units to 15, and also, we'll still have 40 congregate shelter units, and we'll have five safe tent and five parking units, but I just wanted to update everybody on that.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Would we venture to say that it was extremely competitive?
Absolutely.
And we were, we were running against the big dogs?
Yeah, the jurisdictions that were funded were large jurisdictions, LA, San Diego, and also large counties, and we have noticed in the trend is that they are not providing more than one so far to a single jurisdiction, so we're not expecting to, to get funded in that round.
Thank you.
So my question has to do with the project itself, going from 45 to 15, obviously that's a significant impact. Is there, in there?
It was, I'm sorry, it was 30 plus 5 ADA.
Okay. So I misspoke, 40, that's twice today. So in that process, are there things being done in the eventuality of having additional funding so that it'll be an easy set-in, so that, you know... be an easy set-in, so that, you know, and as the project moves along, are they doing things to prepare for, for additional units?
So, the way that we had the contract bid and written, there are, the contract was written with additional, with the groundwork to be done. However, we didn't budget that in. So, we've only budgeted for the 15 plus the 5 ADA. However, if we do get further funding, it will be a change order that will be under the contract.
Okay. If you, we had a, I think the presentation was back in?
August.
August? Yeah. First meeting in August, where ultimately, there was three different type, three different potential scenarios. And that was when the, your council contributed a contribution towards the project as well. And ultimately, there was kind of, there was a scenario A, which, which was with the funding that they had received so far. Scenario B was with the city council, city of Orville's contribution. And scenario three was if we were able to get additional funding in ERF Round Two. And ultimately, as Amy mentioned, it will just be a change order if they can secure additional funding. But with that type of a reduction, obviously 1.7 million, it's, it's going to be tight to, to keep things going and making sure, obviously, the infrastructure's in place for the 40 congregate, the 15 pallet shelters, and then the operational expenses that are going to be needed for the next two and a half, three years of operations.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. On that, just clarification. So, I know we didn't get the funding for the 30-plus units. However, we have the ability, should funding come in in a future, in the future, we have the ability to expand that, right? So, the infrastructure is still going to be able to be put in place, or we'll have to wait to put the infrastructure in for the full amount that we want? Does that make sense?
Well, we would, it's set in place where the, the contract and the work is scoped to, for the expansion. We, as soon as we receive funding, then we could definitely put that in place with a change order. But without the funding, it won't, yeah.
Okay. We have the ability for expansion, though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ruth?
Good evening. I wanted to let you know, in January, we had a really great pension update for the unfunded liability. And it was, you know, trying to find ways to attack our new unfunded liability. Our actuarial reports came out in August, and so I thought it might be a good time to, to have another quick little 10-minute presentation in October just to update you on what our new liability is, how we went from zero to 11 million in one year. But, so I'm, I'm scheduling that for October because they did such a great job in November. And working on a carpet RFP for City Hall, so that's exciting. I know you guys walk through here and see the condition of the carpet is pretty bad. And then last, I want to let you, let you know I'm going on vacation. So, I will be gone from the 7th to the 16th, returning to work on the 18th. So, I will, hopefully, you won't need anything critical, but I can always be contacted.
All right. Anyone else? Looking good. Then we'll move forward. The next item is the consent calendar. Anyone have any issues on the consent calendar? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as agenda size.
So, move.
A second.
Moved and seconded. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
No.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Next regular business is item number six, is approval of an application for the federal fund account last mile grant program by the Golden State Connect Authority and letter in support of the project. Who's going to speak on this one?
That's me, Mayor.
Okay.
Sorry. And we have someone. Can you let Patrick into the meeting, please? Sorry, he goes by Pat also. So, this might be confusing for everybody.
It'll just take one moment. He'll need to rejoin as panelists, but it'll, it's going to reroute it. So, it should take about 10, 15 seconds.
Okay. I'll, I'll just go ahead and get started, though.
Go ahead.
Okay. This is a, this is an opportunity for the city to have broadband, fiber optic broadband infrastructure throughout this, throughout the city. And it's a, the Golden State Connect Authority will be the lead on this. In fact, it's their project. So, what this item is before you tonight is, is approving a letter of endorsement for their, for them to go after a grant through the federal funding authority to provide $7.5 million for them to pursue this grant. Most of the project will be funded through bond financing, and the Golden, the GSCA will be handling everything. So, they're going to do the, they're going to do the bonding, they're going to do, they're going to apply for the grant, they're going to, if awarded the grant, they're going to hire the contractors, and they are going to install a complete fiber optic system or broadband system throughout the entire city and in some parts of the county. And this will provide broadband to every address. So, in 2023, there was a study that was performed, and it determined that there's a significant portion of the city that's considered unserved or underserved. Unserved is 25 megabits per second or less than that, and underserved is less than 100 megabits per second. And then a lot of the city has no options or no choices to choose. So, this fiber optic system, if they're able to install this, will allow multiple carriers to lease space on this one fiber optic network that will provide choices to everybody in the city. So, there's, for, for us, there's no obligation. There's, if they are awarded the grant, they will go through the regular process. They'll go through a encroachment permits. They'll abide by, by our policies for repairing streets or cutting into the streets. They're actually going to do it by, not by cutting in or trenching, but by boring. So, they'll cut holes at each end of a street, and then they'll bore underneath it to run a conduit and then run the fiber optic line through that. And so, so what is before you tonight is just approving a letter that supports their application for a grant to hopefully make all that happen for us. And it looks like Pat's not going to make it, but I think maybe I gave you enough information.
He's on.
Oh, is he? Okay.
He is on. It's just not showing on that screen, but he's on our Zoom call.
So, Pat Blacklock is here to, if you have any questions further, in case I get in the weeds for what's happening with them on the backend. But, but high level, the gist is basically what I just laid out for you.
And if I could piggyback, it seems like it's, it's a great opportunity for the, for under, we, there was another grant that the city was awarded a while back that, that assessed where areas of the city that were underserved or not served for, from broadband perspective. And the goal here is to have options now throughout the entire city, which would be a significant enhancement for, for all residents and businesses.
This would be really great for students, for businesses, small businesses. Everyone will benefit from this.
Yeah. I'm aware of the industrial unit number two has very little, if any, broadband at all. And many of our business operators down there are spending a lot of extra money to have a separate internet connection. So, this is, this is, and I remember the PUC had identified the areas in Orville that were well underserved, mostly the commercial business retail area. So, it'll be, and to me, I think it's a, it's a win-win if we can get it, so. Any questions? Yes.
Thank you. I have three primary questions. My first is regarding how confident we feel in this application. Like, what is our level of confidence that we might get awarded, which might be better for Pat online?
I think that they feel pretty confident, and, yeah, Pat can weigh in this, but they, I think they feel pretty confident that we have a good chance because of our, the study that was performed and our level of unserved and underserved. So, it's going to, it'll give us some, some good points. I should say, too, that this is actually, so the county is the member of the GSCA. And so, the county is sort of the lead agency here for the application, but they've just determined that, that areas of the county would be, this is meant to be a last mile program, so the areas of the county be more like mid-mile. So, they're, so they are just going to be applying for, for Chico and for Orville.
Okay. And then my next part is, if approved, what kind of timeline would they expect for implementation?
18 to 24 months.
Oh, that's rather fast.
Oh, what, and let me take that back.
Oh, okay.
So, they need, they have to still do their bonding, they have to still do their other financing. So, once all the financing is in place, it'll be an 18 to 24-month project.
Now, I am familiar with the last mile project, and a lot of that funding came from the state, but the state's now projecting a deficit. Are we expecting less monies to be available for such projects, or because of the bonding structure, same?
Well, the bonding is going to be the, the heavy lift, and then there is, there's another financing, this is where I'll bring Pat in for this, but there's another financing component to this. And then it is, the whole thing is sort of predicated on the grant happening. So, if the grant doesn't happen, then the rest of it's a little bit sort of dicey. But Pat, do you want to weigh in on that at this point?
Sure. I'll just add that you're correct, Councilmember. The funding in this year's budget is less than was originally allocated. However, there is still funding for this program in the budget, and that's what the CPUC will allocate. The question is, how many applications will be submitted? And it will, will the program be overtaxed because more applications were submitted than are available funds? And we just don't know the answer to that, and we won't until the end of this month when they've received all the applications.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys working on this project, and I hope that it turns out in our favor.
Fingers crossed.
I, I have a question. So, real world scenario. So, I'm an underserved customer, I'm a business, I'm in downtown. My internet goes out when it rains. What, and, and my, and I'm with a major carrier currently. So, and, and that could describe half the people in this room. What is the reasonable expectation with this program? It sounds like they're going to be working with those major carriers that we all know their names, their acronyms. So, then what I, could I then expect then to be upgraded with my current carrier, with that project? What does that look like in, in real time? And then what, what would my bill then look like? Would it go down? Would it go up? Would I have a, a fee to my bill if I say, hey, I want to jump on the train now that that infrastructure's in? So, real world, how does that impact me in three, in 36 months?
I think that it, it, so it's going to be up to the carrier, because right now, you probably have the option, depending on where you are, to have 100 BPS, 300 BPS, 500 BPS. You know, so you'll have level of services, and you can pay for that as, you know, as you want to, the speeds that you want to have. So, the carrier, that'll be up to the carrier. So, GSCA will own the, the system, and they'll be leasing it to the, to the company. So, then it's completely up to the companies to how they're going to provide services. However, since now there's this opportunity for competition, the chances are that everyone will have a better opportunity for, for a better rate at a faster service.
Okay. Looking, looking forward to that. Because I have, I, I'm suspicious, just being in building back some time ago, that some of these carriers have been kind of holding off, allowing you to upgrade, kind of waiting for some of these programs to come through, you know, because, again, the funding. So, I'm, I'm optimistically not going to hold my breath, but I just, it's, it's, it's needed.
It provides opportunities for the carriers to have more customers, and it might also provide a little nail biting for them, too, that if they are, if they're the only ones in town in a certain spot, so.
Nail biting is good.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? So, on this item, do we, do we need a vote or a consensus?
Yeah, there was, there were two, two action items, I believe, on here. One was just the, the approval for the city to request to be a part of this program and obtain the funding, and also a letter of support for the program.
All right. I entertain a motion. There's no more questions. Unless anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve City Council to support the GSCA to pursue a grant from the CPUC. And what was the second?
A letter of support.
Oh, and I, and to write a letter of support. Thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Look forward to the progress on that. You know, and I have to just, we had a CPUC judge here, actually in this room, at one time, and we were discussing this very issue. This is probably four or five years ago. And one carrier said they were going to make a obligation of $7 million of improvements to the Orville area. I've yet to see it. And he, he said that in front of the CPU judge, which is very interesting. Looking forward to improvements there. All right. Item number seven, North Star placed branding contract and new Orville branding.
All right. Yes, I'll, I'll kick this off, Mr. Mayor. The, just some background on this. Well, first of all, Councilmember, both Councilmember Thompson and Councilmember Weber requested that this item be placed on the agenda. And just, just some background on this. Back in February of 2022, the council approved an RFP to go out for marketing services, to assist the city with changing the perception externally, to hopefully better attract businesses for economic development and for tourism. So, it was in February 22. In June of, I believe later in April of that year that a presentation was done, and then in June, June 7th of 2022, a contract with, with North Star was brought before the council to perform those duties. North Star was retained. They did site visits, interviews, met with focal, focus groups, required, put out surveys to gather information. An internal team here was developed within the, the city that consisted of five staff members as well as two council members to help work with the team as they went through the project. Ultimately, 635 unique points of view were presented to the, to the team to help them with this project. Initial findings were presented to your council back on August 15th. That included a, a number of information. Obviously, since then, there's been a lot of other feedback that's been, that's been received, which is good. Feedback is always good. So, the, the item was brought back tonight for additional information to see what, if, if the council wishes to add any more direction that was given. Obviously, there was direction given at the last council meeting to proceed forward with the project. There was a budget approved to implement the, the project, and the, there was a contract amendment to continue that project with North Star. I will say that in talking with North Star, it's, it's not uncommon, obviously, for something like this to, to have lots of feedback pushed forward when something is initially brought forward. So, that is very commonplace when such programs are developed. But I'm, obviously, I'm, I'm very interested in the, the conversation we're going to have this evening, and hopefully it's more public input dialogue. I'll turn it over to, to Councilmember Weber or Thompson.
I have a, I just have a question, only because our Q is not.
Sure.
So, did I hear you say that the original conversation in, in this agenda item was actually initiated back in February 2022?
2022 is when the?
So, it's been approximately a year and?
Year and a half.
Year and a half. That we continue to have this conversation, and we've received public input over that time span. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So, I appreciate this conversation happening. And as you all know, that I was the, the sole person on the council that voted no against the implementation of the logo and the tagline, and then also the further funding with North Star as well. And after that, I, in the following days after that, I started receiving a lot of phone calls and emails and messages and texts from folks that were not happy with, with the new logo or the tagline. So, with that being said, I didn't think that, when I voted no, I didn't think it would garner that much attention. And I'm, I don't think my no vote garnered that much attention, but I think that people gravitated toward me because I was the one that voted no. So, I think that, I think the logo and the poor quality garnered a lot of, of attention. And the tagline, which, in my opinion, makes no sense at all, garnered a lot of attention. So, what I would like to do, first, first off, I want to, I conducted a little poll on my Facebook page, my City Council page, and out of, there was 210 votes cast on my, on my poll. And I just, the poll was four simple questions. Like the, the new logo, dislike the new logo, and then the tagline is belong, along our water, as you know. And the Orville Community Development Coalition actually has a brochure that we developed. It's a, a community resource brochure that was made for our at-risk population. And we have two contributing members in our we have two contributing members in our, um, coalition that actually attributed to the, uh, narrative in it. And, uh, Linda Up the Grove, her last name is Up the Grove, um, she, she, uh, did a wonderful job, and she had originally given us a line in it that said, "In the city of gold, find your path." Well, when we redid it, Cindy Daniluk actually redid it and then wrote, "Find your path in the city of gold." So, I'm not saying that has to be our tagline, I just thought, well, I'll just do a comparative analysis between the two. So, out of the, all the votes cast, uh, for the like the logo, there was two, for dislike, there was a hundred and fifty, for belong along, there was zero, uh, votes cast, and for find your path, there was fifty-eight votes. So, using that kind of as a, a little bit of a, a, a gauge to, you know, feel out what the public's gonna say about this, I think that, that's, uh, evidence that supports that this isn't gonna be really well received. So, I would like to do as follows, stop implementation of the logo and tagline, terminate any further business with North Star Place branding, go back to formula, get active public feedback and design suggestions, um, and how I would kind of like to go about this, and this is just a suggestion, I'm just one of seven up here, but I would actually like to look, look at the cleaning up our city seal, um, eliminating the small white train, raising the water levels on the river, and not having large exposed banks, because that's not even reflective of our river, um, more Table Mountain closer with our large iconic O prominently displayed, and, um, at our beautiful green bridge in there as well. Now, and then taking from that drawn element, that, from that with the logo, take, take a piece of that and then use that in the logo. Now, I have to, I, I'd love to give credit where credit's due. I was sitting in the audience when this discussion was had last year, and I actually remember, um, Vice Mayor Smith and Councilmember Thompson, uh, actually addressing that, that seal at that time, and I thought, when they were bringing up those, those, uh, their concerns with, that I thought they were accurate, 'cause it doesn't quite look like what we have. We can't even see the dam from downtown, so, and let alone why don't we have an O prominently displayed on the, the Table Mountain? And I understand that that's the Zephyr train, but you would never know that by looking at it, uh, because there's no distinguishable features on it at all. Furthermore, uh, the Zephyr ran from nineteen forty-nine to nineteen seventy, so that was approximately twenty-one years. That was fifty-three years ago, over a half a century, and the O was dedicated June eighth, nineteen twenty-nine, which is ninety-four years ago and counting. It's still here, the Zephyr's not. So, to have a Zephyr train that you can't even see, it's a Zephyr train in our seal, makes zero sense to me, um, but to have an O and a green bridge that are still here and will be here for the duration of this city, as long as this city's around, we're gonna keep those two things, um, that would make much more sense in, in, in my eyes. So, um, I say that we get community input, now whatever that looks like, I'm sure we're gonna have some suggestions from our community, and, and we've got a, a, a great group of people in our, in citizens that are extremely creative. So, I say, well, let's work hard to get community participation and buy-in that will allow them to take pride in our logo, and, um, so I say, we take this back to formula, scrap, uh, the stuff that, uh, North Star did, and then we, uh, work toward getting our community involved and have a logo and a tagline that makes sense and is reflective of our heritage, our history, and have pride and ownership from our citizens. And that's all I got.
Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Uh, absolutely agree with Mr. Weber, he's got a lot of great ideas. Um, yes, the, in the, the beginning of this, just a little bit of edit as far as Mr. Ring, um, conversation did, it's funny, when I first broached the seal back when, I think it was maybe even before the date that you talked about, I, my memory on dates is not as strong as, as our mayor, who's got, uh, a memory like a steel trap. But, um, the transition from, I, my heart is that we have a seal, we have a logo, something that the community at large, it's a, it's a celebration, it's, uh, something that's, uh, when you look at, it identifies our community, all the points that, uh, Councilmember Weber made, I, a hundred and fifty percent in the greens. I don't think necessarily we have to fully scrap our logo or our seal, I think just some small edits, just like you said, you know, right now, it shows the water line halfway there, it's a lot of just brown, so either bring the trees down or the river up, green bridge, which is iconic, something that, when you look at the city's seal, uh, you communicate, that's Orville, it's not, what's that? So, um, something that I, I've been talking to, um, well, first of all, I wanna say, after it was, was rolled out, after our last city council meeting, um, and it was posted on Facebook, I was pretty shocked and, uh, let our city administrator know my thoughts. But, um, got a lot as well, a ton of feedback, even though I voted, uh, yes on the project, I was vehemently against the tagline, but I wasn't so much necessarily opposed to the, uh, O, especially if it was just to be used on pamphlets, advertising material, things outside the community, but as far as inside, as far as our main logo, or even Facebook page, you know, main thing, I was, was not, uh, too happy about that. But, something that we did, you know, as, uh, I've been a, a part of rebranding organizations before, and there is something, the process that is very involved, a very, uh, inclusive involvement that I think would be really fun as a community, although any change you make with anything, I'm not a, I'm not surprised that there's opposition to, uh, the change that was made. I'm surprised at the amount of opposition that I heard from a lot of people in regards to the change, but anytime you change anything, even if it's a light bulb that doesn't work, you're gonna have people that, now it's too bright, you know? So, that's, you just get that with any change. Um, but if we were to have a, a way of, you know, I'm glad that people came to the table, even if they're upset, um, because I think we were trying to get some voice in from the community, and, um, I think that maybe people, some people that are now at the table, uh, weren't necessarily fully engaged with the process. I, I, my, my voice back with some people that were really upset, I'm like, welcome to the table, I'm not sure where you were last council meeting, but I'm glad you're here now, regardless of what was going on, we all have busy lives. Um, but there's a process that actually is pretty inclusive, that I think if we were gonna, uh, look at the city's seal, which was the, in my opinion, the impetus of part of this, was just, uh, just cleaning some things up, bringing a fresh, fresh look, not completely throwing away the old and bringing something new, but just, um, doing some fine touches. Um, there is a company, there's companies that, that do this, and we don't have to go with the company, but when I did a redesign and new logo, uh, there was a website that I put a price out there, that I'm looking for a new logo, and then, design artists puts together projects, I said, I'm looking for this, and they came, and I got to work with five different artists, didn't pay them anything, they understood that the winner at the very end would get the, the kitty or whatever, and I think we have in our community a lot of amazing artists, that if we were to say, hey, we're looking for, uh, and I, I don't think if somebody were to bring something completely different, that it would get a lot of community support, but if we had a, a local contest with our local artists and said, hey, if you wanna be involved with, uh, redoing something, make it, just in the same way we did the, the redistricting, how there was a lot of community buy-in, there was a lot of community input, there was, uh, there was access to all that, and then at the end, obviously, the city council would have to vote on, uh, approval of one, but I think we could do something that would be similar to that, where we invite the community in, local artists, and then give the op, the community an opportunity to, um, you know, make some edits or changes that would be embraced by our community, that, when, at the end of the day, what we're looking for, what I'm looking for, I should say, at the end of the day, is that when you look at our city's seal, anybody who barely has any knowledge of the history of Orville can look at it and be like, that's Orville. You know, and that was my main problem at the beginning, was, uh, because I'm not, I haven't been around as, as long as many in, in Orville, um, but I look at that, I call it the centipede, and I'm like, I'm not sure what that is, and now having to learn the history of the Zephyr, and, yeah, it's only was here for a, a period of time. But, something iconic like the Green Bridge, a little bit of, oh, bring the water line down or up, or the trees down, uh, just kind of cleaning it up, I think would be beautiful. I'm not, again, like I said last council meeting, I'm not opposed to the, to the O that North Star Branding did, I would just prefer it just be done on marketing stuff, um, that isn't necessarily like the front page of a Facebook page, or on the side of city trucks or whatnot. So, anyway, um, but as far as the, the desire of Mr. Weber, Weber to stop this, uh, and then just bring it back to the table, uh, because, especially with how much opposition that I got, uh, to what was done in the last council meeting, I'm fully on board with, uh, what he mentioned, so, that's my two cents.
Not sure who is first, you go, which one's first?
I haven't raised my hand.
Okay.
Just raised my hand.
Go ahead. Councilman Johnstone.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I'm in full support of pulling it back, and, and, um, let's hear some more from the community. I wa, I am quite surprised, though, that, um, at the onset of this rebranding process, um, it was put out on Facebook and, um, on the city page, right, for community input, and the research that's showing here is that there were only a hundred plus site co, visit conversations, there was only a hundred and thirty, um, I don't know if this is input into the branding orville.com, or if this was actual, you know, data entered in on that. There was only a hundred and forty-two community survey respondents and nineteen external perception calls, um, with two hundred and forty-eight external consumer respondents. So, um, with the amount of, of community, um, discussion about this now, I was quite surprised to read these numbers again and see how little, um, response we got from the initial rebranding, um, with the community involvement. However, being contacted by so many of the compute, of the community, um, after we had initially agreed, I'm, I am in full support of looking at it again and hearing from our community. Um, we do have a lot of great artists. I think community involvement is very important, especially when they can take ownership of it and they can take pride in it. Um, the feedback, I was quite surprised at the feedback, honestly. Um, I know that we do have some great community artists that are in our community, and, um, I'm not sure why they did not get involved from the onset of this program, but I would like to see what they have to offer before we make a final decision. Thank you.
Councilwoman Riggs?
Thank you. Uh, I'll respond to a few of those things, as you, as it's been clearly stated at several points, I brought this to council after attending a conference, where North Star presented along Kern County and Bakersfield, along with other communities, about how a rebranding and reorienting of a community's, um, most marketable assets can help develop a stronger business environment, uh, spur economic development, and create community pride. Uh, and so that was my hope in bringing this item forward, that we could replicate those things. We have, for a very long time, allowed the outside community, or people who want to imagine Orville the same way it was in the fifties, to be our primary spokesperson for the city of Orville, and that's not an accurate reflection of our community. Uh, and so that was my hope, is that by engaging in this process, we would spur those conversations that can help us better identify what our natural assets are and market those in appropriate way. I think it's important to, I'm gonna touch on a few things that you guys have all shared. The first, in the, uh, what was posted on Facebook was a brand element, not a logo, and an O with a squiggle through it and a tagline is a simple brand element, not an inclusive product. And so I think that there's a huge misconception about the work that North Star has done and the process that the city employees and two of us council members have went through over the past year and a half to present such a product. So, an O, that's not the logo, that's a brand element, it's one piece of a marketing initiative. So, I think that's really important, and of course, somebody may not like that specific feature, but, uh, when I think about the DNA statement and the narrative created for Orville, that's not something you guys are talking about, but I would say many of us would agree with it. So, I think that it's really important to, okay, thank you for interrupting me. I think it's really important that we consider a full picture, that it's not, this project is not about a logo, and it's not about a tagline, but it is about spurring economic development, attracting businesses, and attracting visitors, and attracting residents who want to live the quality of life that we all experience on a regular basis. So, we can tear apart, and it's really easy to tear apart, one glimmer of an element on Facebook, where we've all seen that over the past two weeks, and some of us has spurred it on ourselves, um, but I think it's really important to look back and see that this isn't just a, a, a logo, this is about development. In addition, um, I would agree, six hundred might not feel like a lot, but those were, I took the survey, and I also participated in the interviews, those were hour-long interviews, those were roundtable discussions with full groups of our business community, with community leaders, they were comprehensive, and the surveys were not a four-question survey on Facebook, but a comprehensive survey, looking at actual representations of our community, and I would say that the number of respondents are actually quite good, considering the depth in which it went into. So, for me, I think, uh, yeah, does the city's seal need updating? Absolutely. Do, does our city need a brand and a cohesive message? Absolutely. Um, and does our city need good jobs and a healthy industry? Yeah, absolutely, and I see this as, as a means to get there. Not that we're all gonna agree with it and love it all the time, or that it's perfect and it encompasses everything that Orville is, a marketing initiative is never going to do that. But I do think that we have a good foundation to start with. I believe, as Weber, uh, suggested, there are still rooms for improvement, there is different iterations of taglines that we could utilize in different functions, and I would rather us not waste the year and a half and the six hundred inputs that we've already received, and the money that we've already spent, by tossing it all out, but instead say, okay, here's where we're at, we're gonna approve this, and we're gonna continue to develop and adjust, and better with the additional feedback and with other people who are now interested in it. But, I think that starting from scratch, it would be foolish.
You had a question, Janet?
I did.
Mr. Mayor, could we also hear from the public as well?
Well, we will, but yeah, well, well, I'm sure there's some speaker cards.
All right, so I'm gonna try and, I'm gonna use the kids' theory, um, kids, keep this thing simple. So, I look at the agenda item, and I just want clarification, and I'm just gonna state for the record, there is a difference between a city seal and a city logo. They're both the property of the city, but they are used for two different purposes. So, the city uses the seal to certify official city records, and the city logo is used as a graphic symbol to identify, to market, and to partner, and for sponsorships. So, we have one agenda item, but it looks like we're trying to co-mingle two separate issues here. So, I, I think, is the question, do we do that, or do we keep the two items separate? That's all.
I, I'm gonna add my comments here, 'cause I've been very patient, and pretty much, if you read the research, which this company did for us, do you know what the people in Elk Grove consider a place to go and have fun and recreation is?
Water.
Fifty-nine percent of them said Nevada City. That's what we're talking about here, folks. We're trying to sell our community, and nobody knows a thing about us, and this company went to Sacramento, went to the Bay Area, did extensive research and found out, nobody knows we're here. So, we've got to get our word out there as a marketing tool. The city's seals certainly should be upgraded, I, that, that's easy, that's a separate deal. The logo is, is an ever-changing thing, because you wanna market for different reasons. You might wanna market for historical district, museums, and those kinda things. You might wanna market for water activities, you might wanna market for downtown, uh, retail business shopping, you might wanna market for restaurants and dining. So, those are all marketing tools in this whole process. So, when you say logo, I think Councilman Riggs has it, it's just a part of the tools to be used. The critical work here was done, we found out folks in Sacramento don't know we're here, and if we change our city's seal, they still won't know we're here. That's what we have to, that's the kicker, and, and I think Councilman Goodson separates it very clearly. The seal, yes, it should be updated, no, no question. But the logo is something that's gonna evolve as the market bears. I mean, uh, I know Vice Mayor Smith has tried to market Orville. When you go down to the Sportsman's Expo, the best flag we ever had was standing up in front of there, I worked it for a day or two, said, "Fun starts here, Orville." That drew everybody over there. drew everybody over there. That may be one of the good suggestions to add to this process. But in that logo, I've seen 10 different marketing tools from the "Set Your Sales To Orville," and there was a sailboat. That was our logo, a sailboat. Didn't last very long, did it? Some of you can't even remember it. Janet Wilson was the mayor, I remember, in 1988. So the marketing tool is what we're really after here. And the bottom line is, I'm glad so many people are interested. You know, we certainly have tremendous amounts of input here. And that input should be adjusted to what they've received from the marketing from the outside area, our inside community, how we want our community marketed. I'm glad to see so many people responded to it. I think it's wonderful. And I would just have the committee move forward and take all that and absorb it into those elements. Now, the city seal probably is a different type. We didn't ask them to even work on the city seal. That wasn't even part of the job here, you know? And that probably is, that might be a great idea for a local competition for a city seal, because that's an identifier for it. Now, when you do that, we actually have stamps that we have to change, too. There's a lot of things to do. And I got no problem doing that, because the city seal is old, and it's been around. And I used to ride the Zephyr to Sacramento quite often. But it's, you know, long gone. So those are just my comments. And I think it's a tremendous process. It is not easy, and it should be added to. And I think all your inputs should be brought into the committee and the process. And maybe we need to have a separate committee for the city seal. That might be a thought, just a separate city seal committee, because they're two different things here. We're mixing up. Vice Mayor Smith, were you up?
I want to talk, but I want to hear from the public first.
Well, I know, we're supposed to do ours first and then take the speaker cards.
Yeah, so it's not back and forth.
You want to go to?
Why is it circular?
This is what I do on my day job. And as you had mentioned, I have taken our city, over the years, out of Butte County, Sacramento, also for other firms, in engaging the public. And just digesting some of the comments on Facebook, sometimes, sometimes we're our own worst critics, right? It's like our own family. You know, we know where, you know, our weaknesses are. And sometimes we can, you know, be harder on ourselves than others are on us. And I'd have to say that, after talking to literally thousands of people representing Orville in the Sacramento area at various shows over the years, that we actually, people have a pretty good feeling when it comes to Orville. There are people that bring their family here for, traditionally, to have family reunions, a lot of house boaters. There were whole clubs that would come up and use the diversion pool for kayaking, and on and on. There are so many different activities. You have the duck clubs, the hunting clubs, and the wildlife area. Orville has so much to offer. I mean, we're an amazing community, and people love Orville. You know, and sometimes it's just the optics of what you perceive or see. You know, we see some of the things that we feel that need to change, and there are things that certainly do need to be dealt with, when it comes to some of the criminal elements and some of the other things that we see, the unsightly things. But let me tell you, if you get outside of Orville and you travel down to the Bay Area, and you come back to Orville, it's like, hmm, you know, things aren't maybe quite as bad as I thought they were. And when you can, and you know, you don't want to get into comparison. That's an easy thing to do. But when others come to Orville, and they go to our lake, or to our rivers, or to the aquatic area, the wildlife area, you know, they have amazing experiences, as I did when I came up from the Bay Area, to come up here to fish and to hunt and do all that stuff. And I just loved Orville and all the things that it had to offer. You know, when it comes to strap lines or logos, these are campaigns, as I think Councilwoman Riggs was pointing out. I've run several campaigns. I have the billboards out on Highway 99, all four of those billboards. And what we call, they're called "Call to Actions," right? And so you see kids like splashing in the water, that's one of my billboards, or there's a gal on a ski doo, right, and it says, "Escape the Grind: Orville," right? And so when somebody drives by and they see that, they go, wow, hey, Margaret, let's go up to the lake next week. We'd like to do that, right? And so it's just creating this kind of feel, this feel-good kind of sense of that there's fun, cool things to do in Orville. And from my perspective, when that was presented back in April 19th of last year, that's what I was envisioning that North Star would bring. Now, I was somewhat critical, as I did, yes, I did pick on the logo. I think it does need some, or the city seal. That is a different discussion. And I was a little bit hard on North Star, because they used Bakersfield as an example. And I said, I know Bakersfield. I lived in Bakersfield, I did. And that's not Bakersfield. And I said, so if you can do something with Bakersfield like that, then, well, maybe you can, we have so much here. I mean, it'll be an easy lift, right? Because, man, we're so much more amazing than Bakersfield. And so, you know, again, I was hopeful. But that being said, one of the points I did make was that we have a lot of amazing folks here in Orville that do a lot of good work, Explore Butte County. You go on their website, amazing content. And that was one of the parts I did not like about the presentation, honestly, was that, again, going back to we're harder on ourself than I think that we should be. And because that video was presented from North Star on Bakersfield, and then, oh, where's our video? Oh, because we don't have any. And that's actually not true. The hospital, they did a whole series called "Orville Unveiled," amazing content, wonderful, well-done commercials elevating and lifting up Orville. And one of the purposes of that, and always, marketing, strap lines, logos, they always come, what do we, what's the end game? What's the goal? And so for the hospital, it's encouraging docs and nurses to come and live here in our town, so that we have quality docs and nurses that think Orville is a cool place to raise a family and have a career. I think that's great. And they did a wonderful job with that product. Again, Explore Butte County, the Downtown Business Association has created content logos and have worked with different companies to do that. And so, you know, again, why did we use a company all the way in Florida, so over 3,000 miles away? Because they were the only ones that responded to the RFP, honestly. And I was disappointed, because I know, and I think that, you know, and I'm kind of digesting the pushback on this particular iteration or logo, it's, and just listening to the comments that people are making, there's just so much amazing talent here. And I think there's this feeling that we could do better. We know ourself. I don't think that all of the research that North Star did, there's 300 pages, it's thick. I think that all has value. When I'm thinking about, when I'm down in Sacramento representing Orville, and I'm talking to people and engaging, trying to sell our community, and, you know, there's all different kinds of things going on there. We want people to come, have an experience, leave some of their money, and go back home. That's good. We want others to come and maybe join Orville to elevate and, you know, enhance the quality of life that we have here. That's a part of it, too. So there's, you know, varying degrees of what the purpose that this project was supposed to and can and will achieve. But I don't think that there's a, it's a waste, that all that research has great value input. It helps create and craft different versions, different ideas, different approaches, different marketing schemes. It all has its, depending on, like you said, you know, what's your target audience? With this, you know, we're doing a salmon festival. Shoot, last year, we had people reading our content in motel, hotel rooms in San Francisco. You know, people are coming from, and I believe that that particular event for Orville, for example, has regional traction, kind of like the Gilroy Festival did for Gilroy. And so there's so much more that we can do. And I've heard other people say, well, we have to get all of our issues fixed, you know, the homeless fix, the crime fix. Let me tell you what, if we waited until everything, we were perfect, we'd be waiting a long time. Because the last time I checked, there are no perfect cities, towns.
Or people.
Because there are no perfect people. She took the words right out of my mouth.
I'm sorry.
And that's just so true. So, but I think we can walk and chew gum. I think we can continue to work on the law enforcement issues and our housing issues. And I think that we can continue to craft our story, our narrative, using the research, using that information, that data that's been collected. I think it's valuable. It's great. It's insightful. And, you know, and this is what I do in my day job, and that's partly why I have to recuse myself on Item B, because when we get across the finish line with the stuff, I want to use it. I got billboards to build out there, people, on 99. I got digital advertising. I got stuff to, I want to get things rocking, and not, you know, bogged down in the grinder here. And, you know, and I was playing with different iterations of taglines. I think that's partly why people just didn't dig the tagline. You know, the "O" with a swoosh, I could see me using that for, you know, a little while out there on a couple of billboards, and I'll move on to something else, because that's how it works. You know, "Where history shines, adventure flows. Orville awaits. Golden legacy, riverfront charm. Orville where adventures flow." I have like 30 of these things. I sit there, you know, and let your mind just go crazy. And I'll use some of this stuff in building billboards and building the things that I do. And by the way, nobody ever complained about any of the stuff I did out of 99.
It was great.
You know, it's just, because, you know why it's called, it's fun. You look at that, and you go, wow, you know, that looks like a real cool thing to do. But we have the clay pits, and like I said, the wildlife area. And, you know, we have a city with a river running through it. We have a diversion pool, the lake, you know, go on and on and on. We have so much to offer. And a lot of it, you know, is still, needs development and work, and I get that. But, you know, let's sell what we got and worry about the rest later on, right? And going back to the other companies that I represented here, major companies, big multimillion-dollar companies here in Orville that are very interested in having people come to Orville. I mean, we're all in, there's a lot of stakeholders in this venture and marketing plan to, you know, communicate Orville is an amazing place to live, to work, to recreate, to dream, to have a family, all those things. And so it's not any one thing, or we shouldn't get stuck, you know, bogged down in this thing. I think we just need to, you know, figure it out, obviously. And at the same time, we want something that folks can be proud of, generally. We're not going to have 100%. You know, like, wow. It's just, I'll never forget, in another line of work, you'd have a handful of people looking at something. And one person would say, that looks, that's terrible. And the other person would say, man, I thought that was the most amazing thing I'd ever, you know, you get 10 people in a room, right? You get 10 different opinions on this stuff. But if, in general, folks aren't real happy with some of the pieces and elements, let's bring it back. We can toe it back. I think what we should do, just as a suggestion here, and of course, there's going to be a lot more commentary, but to have a committee, we can step it back for 30 days, 60 days, reevaluate, take and digest more of the public's comments, and then just kind of retool this thing. But we can do it all, folks. We can walk, chew gum, market, you know, build our town, deal with crime. We can do all of that, all at the same time, no problem, easy peasy. That's how I see it.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Thompson had it up on the list.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, speak for yourself as far as walking and chewing gum, because I'm not sure.
You can.
I'm not a, I, let me just clarify. I'm not in favor of throwing away the research that was done.
It is valuable.
I think it's all, you know, usable, valid stuff that, you know, why people in and out of Orville were, you know, questioned and asked, you know, as far as their take on the city and whatnot, and all that's valuable. It's why we hired a company to do that, instead of us deciding, of seven people, trying to get the take of people within our community and those outside of our community. So I don't think that the information that North Star gathered was a waste. And I tried to communicate that between last council meeting and today, was that, you know, because there was some misinformation put out there that Oracle paid $70,000 for a new logo. And I'm like, that is absolutely not correct. That is misinformation. We did not pay $70,000 for a new logo. We paid $70,000 for a company to do a lot of research from our community, and this was just one aspect. So that's what I've been telling people regarding, you know, because people are upset, like, $70,000 for a logo, and then they said, look, this is two bucks. So anyway, you're going to get that. I guess my frustration with the process was, from the onset, like I communicated, from the onset, the first thing that I brought up personally was the city seal. And what was communicated to me, and you can go back and watch the city council meetings, what was communicated to me is, that is something that we can address in the rebranding. We can look at that and retool it. So I was expecting a city seal. As far as the process goes, the only, as a city council member, the only involvement that was allowed to most of the council was to do the survey, like any community citizen, which was, which was fine and all. When it finally was, anyway, when it was finally presented to me in a kind of a secret reveal, I was hoping that there would be some kind of input that was allowed to be given, although I gave lots of input. It was like in one ear and out the other. None of it, it was just, thank you, and kind of, we did our, you know, checkbox. We told you what we'd done, and now we're going to continue to do what we've done. So there was no, I felt there was no feedback given as a council member into the process. It was just kind of, this is what we've done. There you go. Then it was brought to city council. You heard my comments about loathing the tag, "Belong Along the Water," and then, you know, that being echoed from our, from our community. So that's where I guess the confusion is, because in my opinion, part of the impetus was bringing up the seal and then receiving the "O." So I'm not necessarily, and again, I'm going to communicate the exact same thing I said from last council meeting, is I'm not opposed to the "O," even though some people don't like it, as, in my opinion, as long as it's used for marketing material, not posted on a Facebook page as if it's our new city seal, because what was there before was the seal. And then, right after council, it was "O," offset, wasn't even centered, with the tagline now nestled, tuck, you know, hugging up against the "O" as if the two are one. So I was, I communicated to Brian, I felt like the way it was rolled out was like a slap in my face. So I do would like it brought back. And I think that when these type of things are rolled out, as opposed to just throwing it out there as fast as it was, there is, there's a, there wouldn't have been, I think, such a negative reaction if, if we as a city had handled it a little more smoothly and rolling it out with more explanation, even if, you know, honestly, if the Facebook front page hadn't been changed, I don't know if there would have been the reaction that would have happened. If it was just going to be, if it was just handled and, and used on a billboard like it has been in years past, if it would have just been on a flyer, like we talked about in the last city council, you probably, there probably would have been no, you know, kickback from the community. But when the seal on our Facebook page was replaced with a logo and a tagline, that communicated, the seal was replaced. And also, to me, as a city council person, that communicated to me that the seal was replaced. So if, if there's, and what was told me before the process was, we will look at the seal, and we will adjust that. So I'm expecting, as a city council person, the seal to be addressed, and I got a logo. So now we're, now we're clarifying that we can, and again, I'm not opposed to the, using "O," as long as it's on a marketing material.
Right.
Maybe some billboard on 99, but on the side of a truck's Facebook page, anywhere where it identifies, you know, us, I prefer a seal. So that's, that's where my guttural, that anger.
That's where that passion came from.
That comes from, because again, I brought up the seal. I got a logo.
Right.
And I was not given, even in our, the private reveal, was not given any ear, felt like it was just, it was speaking to a brick wall.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to respond to that, in that, you're right, you did bring up the seal, and that we talked that it could be addressed during the rebranding process. And I just wanted to say that, I apologize, because as a council member in that conversation with North Star and with staff, that never got translated, I think, to North Star, that that was another expectation that we were expecting, or another expectation of their contract. So it's definitely something that I wish that I would have paid more attention to and communicated, to make sure that that was addressed for you. And then, I also think that if we were to move forward, that there is space to add another council person who has that kind of experience and passion that you have, and into that committee, to continue to develop. What are the appropriate uses of each marketing initiative, and that balance between when is the appropriate place for the seal, and when is the appropriate place for a logo or a more informative? and when is the appropriate place for a logo or a more informal representation of our community. And then I would also say that we didn't really get to roll out the new brand. We, we got to post a brand element and a tagline, and then it was crammed to a halt, which then, of course, the community would see it as the only outcome of this seventy thousand dollar contract. And so I think that there, there is a lot of components that we can roll out and that would be embraced. Of course, not by everybody. We won't have a hundred percent adoption, but, but I, I do think that, you know, we were stifled in that process, and rightfully so. It needs to come back and make some adjustments in order to best represent our community.
Mr. Mayor, I do have.
Yeah. I got Weber down there.
No, 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 he could go.
Yes, so since we're all being transparent. Yeah, I actually had concerns with the, though there were public components, there was the research, there was the website, there was, once the creativity portion began, just in that industry, and again, just because I'm kind of familiar with that, it's just a tendency of that industry to kind of like, we're going to keep it all, you know, because we're doing our most creative work, you know, and we're engineering something that you're going to just absolutely be blown away with. And I think that was kind of what, you know, where those, that folks that work in that industry, and that's, that was kind of the feel. Ironically, I came in very late. Most of all, this content was, was already created, because I wasn't even aware of some of the stuff. I came in the last couple of meetings, once it was pretty much developed. But so, so part of that is just the nature of the industry and North Star, that's kind of how, how their optics, how they operate, and they've done this for other cities and done it quite successfully. Like I said, man, if you made Bakersfield shine, look out, because I know all their warts. By living down there, it's like, holy smoke. You know, and so I think there was a lot of hope and expectation, but, and again, it comes back to the rollout, and I think communicating with the public and communicating with the balance of the council. I think, I think that a better job or a different approach could have been exacted. And again, this is kind of like a broiler plate. This is how we do things. Well, Orville's different. We're a very unique community. We're special. And, you know, one of the, I think, upsides to all this public response is that, man, we got some real creative and talented people that got just great insight and things to offer and to bring to the table, and we'll probably be hearing from some shortly in that regard. And so I think there's some wisdom in backing up, taking a pause, maybe doing, you know, an evaluation in, in having that discussion. It looks like the, the tagline is going to get flushed, no pun intended. But again, and then it's just one element. It's one piece. And I think, again, the conflation of, oh my gosh, spent all this money, and that's all you have to show for it? Well, there's a whole lot behind that, a ton behind, and that's the industry. And so that's just the nature of it in general. But I certainly get the criticism. I appreciate the criticism. I think some of it's warranted, and then some of it's based on not having all the facts, and then that is incumbent upon us to be clear and to present those facts, so people have an understanding of what is going on. And so there, we bear some responsibility, I'll take some responsibility for that. And so moving forward, I think we can, we can get across the finish line and get a product that most everyone just, man, that's amazing, that, that's us, that's Orville, I'm proud of that. And at the end of the day, that's what we want. I think we all want that, and I think we can get there.
Comic cards? Oh, excuse me, go ahead, Councilman Weber.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So first and foremost, my sincere apologies for interrupting you, Councilmember Riggs. That was rude of me, and I apologize. So I'm going to, I'm going to take a different slant on this. I appreciate the data, and I, and I think the data is fantastic, and, but the bottom line is this, is that we could, we could chop it up any way we want, but you can't reduce it down to these boiled down points and say, yeah, but it's not this and it's not that, because the general public is going to look at it and say, for seventy-three thousand, we got a stylized "O" in four words, okay? There's no two ways about that. It's just, it's what the perception is going to be to it. So we could, we could talk about the data, we could talk about the process, we could talk about till the cows come home, but at the end of the day, if the, if the public does not receive it, the only thing they're ever going to remember is that council spent seventy-three thousand dollars on a stylized "O" and four words, okay? So I want to, the inputs that were brought up by them, okay, so sure, I'm just a, you know, a little redneck boy that was raised in Bangor, I got a seventh grade education, and, but, so I'm not, you know, I don't have any marketing experience, but I decided to do this little Facebook experiment, and I got two hundred and ten inputs in twenty-four hours, and it cost zero. This firm, for a portion of the seventy-three thousand dollars, got six hundred inputs in a year and a half, okay? So, and these are real and relevant inputs from people that live in our town that are concerned with what this tagline and what this logo represent. So take that for what it's worth. Now, no matter what you say to this, this is a catastrophe, in my opinion. No matter how you spin it, no matter which way you talk about it, you could talk about the process, you could talk about the data, you could talk about all that, till you're blue in the face, and it's just not going to matter, because what matters is what they're going to say about it. That's what matters. So we could, we could sit up here and pontificate about the importance of all these different things and express how it's just this vitally important process that we do all these things, but at the end of the day, if they think that we bought a turd, then it's never going to change, period. Now, on to the seal. I was merely suggesting that we take advantage of designing a, like a cohesive strategy that would redesign an old and outdated seal, that's, in my opinion, not representative of what, of what our city looks like anyway, and then take an element from that and then use that as a logo design element. It was just a suggestion. It didn't have anything to do with this conversation. That wasn't the, that wasn't the driving force behind what I'm saying. It was just a suggestion, like, hey, let's look at this, maybe do that, you know, kind of like throwing spaghetti at the wall, right? So I'd see in what sticks. Now, with that being said, we missed the mark, period. The, I mean, the, the public needed to have input. Now, going back to Councilmember Riggs' comment a minute ago about the ad hoc committee, let's not forget that the ad hoc committee was formed because Eric Vice Mayor Smith fleshed out that there was meetings happening without the council knowing about it, and design elements were being discussed, so then we suggested that ad hoc committee got formed, okay? And I asked to be on that ad hoc committee, and our mayor decided not to put me on it. So there would have been another voice that would have said, hey, we might want to reconsider this, and I was willing to do it and was not appointed. So go, like, since we're all being transparent here, let's be honest, okay? So that's what I have to say. I'm very eager to hear what the public says, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just make a run quick comment, too. One of the reasons that we're looking at water, when you look at the community surveys here, if you look at the data, sixty-five percent, sixty-five point four five percent of those that responded, of the six hundred, said, we need to focus on our waterways, our lake, our rivers, and our bays. And that's one thing that I can say, as a long-term resident, we have never advertised. We have never advertised our river, our lakes, or after bays. They do it on a spot basis, and State Parks does it on a spot basis because of their facilities, but the community of Orville is not known for being a water recreation community. It just isn't, just that simple, so. Let's go to any community comic cards?
Yes, sir. We'll start with Bill Spear and follow it with Julie Miller.
Thank you. Mr. Spear.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I agree with Councilman Weber about ending the contract with North Star. I, it's, it's kind of offensive that we go all the way to Florida when we do have a lot of local talent, and when I first heard about it, I was thinking, why are we getting someone from Florida to come tell us about here in Orville? And I happen to know there's people local that do rebranding, and so I would think the smart way forward would be to take the, the input that they gave, the, the information and the data, and go on to the next phase of working with local people. Put it out there, A, we're going to build on top of this and, and get local people to, and the community to take ownership, turn this into a win, take what we got and build on it. And, you know, the, I've been complaining about this, the city seal for a long time. Calling it a centipede was an upgrade. It's a snake to me. It looks like a snake coming down into Orville, and it does need fixed. But we do have so much potential in our, in our city, city of gold, and, and it's good to get, to get more input, and I'm glad that a lot of people are getting a lot more input. But it seemed like one of the biggest offenses that got a lot of people mad, and it rubbed me wrong right from the start, was why are we using, even though they're, you know, come and do these big cities, Bakersfield and this, and, oh, here we are, Orville, we got somebody just like the big cities got, but it's not, you know, especially in our, especially in our economy right now, being so, so hard for people to survive and people to, to make it, that's a lot of money, and that would be a big boost for a local company. And so we don't have to go all the way to Florida to, to get someone to remarket. We have a tremendous amount of talent, and we should try to focus our resources on local companies, on local community that's going to, going to help us all. In any business, getting a seventy thousand dollar infusion contract is going to bless them, it's going to bless their employees, and we can do the work. It's not something that we have to go all the way to Florida for, and maybe they were the only ones that, that responded, but I think it's going to be different now. I think that we will have a lot more responses. I think it's out there, and people are realizing what's going on, and the importance of it. It is, it is vitally important that we don't get stuck back, but we move forward. Thank you.
At this point in time, it's.
So I guess what I'd just be inviting Councilman Weber to do is to give it a chance, participate in that process. Let's tackle, you know, get the bull by the horns. Let's tackle this issue with the tagline and the logo, and let's see what we can bring out of that, and then you can further bring on this conversation as far as what's done with the spending, you know, over the next months. But at least, let's just grab, get a hold of this thing, let's twist it around, let's get the public input, and then, and then see where it goes from there until we make kind of our final, like, you know, determination. And I just give it, give it a little bit of time, you know? Again, I think we've digested a lot of input from the public that's a lot of value, and again, it goes back to my earlier, back in, a year ago. I thought we should have been inviting the public and having our partners do this in the beginning. I really did, and that's where I was at, going back, and we've already litigated all of that. But that being said, we're kind of like backing up a little bit, but let's capture that energy, let's take advantage of the tide here, and then, so let's see if we can get something across the finish line, and everybody says, yeah. And then if North Star's the company that can then take that new, you know, design elements and propel it forward, or, or if you want to do something else, then that's a, that's a hashout that we can have. But in the, in the moment, you know, if we can just.
Yeah.
Get, go ahead.
Yeah.
Thanks. I think you'd be great for it, Mr. Weber.
I do, yeah.
If, if you're not, if you are vehemently against being on, then I'll do it, yeah. I'll do it. But, but I think that you'd be.
I'll do it.
I'll do it. But I think you'd be great. Yeah, I think you'd be great on it. I'm not saying the situation is, is paused, actually, it's moving forward.
Yes, it is.
Not a rollout, the situation of, of working on it, it continues to move forward. And I don't necessarily put all of the blame, I'm not putting the blame on.
North Star.
On North Star, nor necessarily, but they were, just like it was spoken, they were given direction. So they, they moved on, as Councilman Riggs said, they moved on the direction that was given to them. So they've done a bunch of other cities, and the product they gave to those cities is the reason why this council said yes for them to move forward. So they have produced a good product in the past. A person like yourself, who has a high quality standard and will not take anything less, would be the perfect person to be on this council, to hold their feet, hold their feet to the fire. To make sure that.
Come on, Sean.
To make sure.
Do it for the children.
Listen, to make sure that the.
All right, for the children.
Okay, he's going to do it for the children.
To make, to make sure that the community citizens, those that are in our community that have experience and have that, you know, the input, that that input is not only given, but is received.
Yes.
Because there was input given, like by myself, but it was not received.
Right.
So if, now we can have a process where they're held the feet to the fire, and now that they know that, you know, Mr. Weber's on the council, that, on the committee, that, you know, that they, they're held to a standard that's, not against the people that were on the committee before, but a different perspective that is brought in that, that has currently the ear of the community.
He said yes.
Great.
He said yes.
I give, I give.
All right.
Okay.
We have enough direction to staff on this?
I believe so, but I'm just going to confirm it, though, okay? We're adding Councilmember Weber to the committee. We're going to continue to work and partner with the contractor for the next sixty days.
Yep.
After sixty days, we're going to continue to get input from community members who want to partake in it, and after sixty days, come back to the council with an update.
And as, and as you said, only work authorized by the committee who moves forward in the process, so they're, they're, they're not, the contract is as needed. It's not.
Correct, yeah. And at this point, I imagine the only costs we're going to have are participating in meetings with the contractor at this point.
And may I request, if it, I, my internets are not working right now, but if the Facebook thing is still up there, that that thing taken off.
Yep, we'll put the, we'll put the seal back.
Yesterday.
Yeah. Seal will be back.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you all for your input. Better than all, it takes us all minds put together to get one decision. That works well.
Safety in numbers.
All right, next item, number nine, response to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three final Butte County grand jury report. Who has this? Mr. Ritchie.
I follow the branding thing.
Very well.
So what you have before you is a, a staff report and a draft response to the grand jury, the most recent grand jury questions that came before you, and I'm still scrolling to it, because there was a lot of information here in the last item. And while I do that, for those who want the full item, download the full packet, before a meeting like Mayor Pittman had mentioned. And I'm getting there.
I can kick it off while you're looking for it.
Yeah, what page is it at, Brian? I'm at four twenty-six?
Yeah, the staff report was posted, the, the, the actual, the draft letter came out in a separate letter from Mr. Hubert.
And then I will take a look at the draft letter from Scott. Give me just a second.
Well, some background here, on June twenty-ninth, the, the grand jury issued the final report, the investigation they conducted. We talked about this here internally a couple of meetings ago, and direction was given to work with the executive committee on a response. Both myself and Mr. Hubert, our city attorney, met with that executive committee last week, I believe it was, or maybe the week before that, to go over the draft response, and that draft response is being presented today for further direction or approval.
Does any councilman have any questions about this report that you received? No? Seeing none. Does the public have any questions about the report? Hmm? Do we have any comic cards? No? Okay. Well, then, I guess I need to have, entertain a motion to accept the report.
You can, unless there are other questions about, you know, what a grand jury response is, or the generalities of this, and of course, you can move forward if you want to.
I move that we approve the city of Orville's response to the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three final Butte County grand jury report.
And I'll second that.
Motion seconded. Can we call a roll, please?
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber? Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
And then I have it noted, Mr. Thompson.
He's just walking in.
Do you approve the grand jury response?
Just voting on the issue.
Just voting on the issue.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Perfect, motion carries.
Thank you. Number 10, capital asset requests.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Pittman and council members, you have before you a list of the capital asset requests for the fiscal year 2324. There is, during the budget cycle, we have departments request equipment, which for many years, we didn't have any money, so there was nothing addressed. And now we have, we have a lot of items that we're trying to catch up on. About, of this list, you've already seen maybe half of them already, they've been to council, but I wanted to give you a list in its entirety of all the things that we will be purchasing this year pending your approval. I did wanna mention the three dump trucks, the price changed and it increased from your last approval, it increased $1,200 each, so that's a net change of $37.45 more than you've already approved. But I wanted to give you the entire list, so some of these you've already seen and there is a correction on the flock system for the police department. You approved that to come through the district tax fund, not the capital asset replacement fund, so I've moved that over. The intent for this list is to bring it to you on a regular basis, maybe quarterly, so that you can see what has actually been purchased and what we're still waiting on because several of these things are from last year and they're just such a supply challenge right now that we're not sure when we're gonna get some of these things or even if we're going to. But we wanna just update you quarterly and give you, bring you the list and say, hey, this came in and we paid for this and, and hopefully that, that you'll be okay with that because in the prior year, we came to you with every single item. And so the, the goal is to maybe do this all at once and then just update you as needed.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I have one.
Yeah, Councilor Weber.
Yeah, thank you very much. So, yeah, I, I reviewed the list Brian gave it to me because I couldn't tap on the, the little number next to the 10 and see the list on my, on my computer for some reason. But Brian gave me the list and I, I reviewed it and I just wanted to say that I think the list is good. And there's two purchases on there in particular that I'm really pleased about, which is for Public Works and they're, the hot trailer for asphalt, that I think is gonna be huge and very important because one of the problems we have during the winter, of course, is all these reoccurring potholes that, that happen due to excessive moisture in the holes and then we're using a cold patch compound and, and then what ends up happening is they just blow apart. So this would be a great opportunity for us to use this trailer, which will hold, how long will it keep the pavement hot?
We can keep it hot for 24 hours. There's two different burner styles on it. It can run off of propane or natural gas and an electric element. So we can heat it overnight, it stays hot in the box. In the morning, we go out and deploy, we have hot asphalt.
So, so it, it gives you a, just a greater window of opportunity to, to serve and then keep your product really hot during the winter. So on days that we're not, it's not raining and you guys could go out and, you know, prep a, prep a hole and then patch it and, and do a much better patch. Basically, it's an enclosed trailer that's gonna keep the asphalt hot. And the other thing is the crack sealing machine. And the crack sealing machine is, I think I mentioned it six, seven months ago now, right, right at the beginning of, of council this year, that, that when I, when I heard and understood that we had hired an outside firm or the, somebody else, not this council, but the previous council, I believe, or somebody else, had hired a firm to go out and crack seal the airport, and I think, I don't know what the, but I heard it was like 300 grand or something, the first thought that popped in my head was, well, why not buy a crack sealer? You know? And then have Public Works do the crack sealing, you know, like, so, so I'm super happy to see that on there. And I think those are gonna be incredibly important tools for your department to ser, better service the needs of our citizens and these roads that are in such a dire need. And just as a note too, I, I know, I know you are initiating a really great paving plan too, so I think that, I'm looking forward to next year because we're gonna have all this really cool equipment and this skidster attachment, attachments and all that stuff. Anyway, what that equates to, and the reason why I wanted to bring this up is because for our, for, at the end user, our citizens and, and us too, we live here, this is gonna equate to faster ability to strike on these issues that pop up. So it's, it's excellent. I totally support this.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to add on with the, with the crack sealer machine, it could add life and years to our asphalt where we're stopping the degradation, we're stopping the water infiltration, getting into the base of the roadway, which makes it break even faster. With keeping the water out, it, it, it helps the, it helps the roadway structure, so it'll be a great piece and it's a key part for preventative maintenance as far as roads go as well.
So since you brought that out.
Yes, ma'am.
We had, we're no longer in a drought. But with the torrent of rains that we experienced last year and many cities experienced major potholes, sinkholes in some instances, and so is this the type of equipment and advanced type of patching that's going to curtail and mitigate that type of issue coming up again?
Potentially it can, it can help and it, it preserves our streets. As far as sinkholes, that can be from different road based failures, there could also be a failed pipe underneath those. The hot patch trailer in combination with crack seal is great. Not only we can use the, the hot patch trailer in the wintertime, it's also important for us to have this during the paving season as well, for the same reason where we're putting hot mix in the back of a dump truck, we're getting it from out of town, by the time we get here, it starts cooling, it starts setting up and we don't have as good of a product going on the road as it would be inside of a hot box. I, I hope that answers your, your question.
Oh, that makes sense.
I'm not trying to dodge it, I'm just trying to give some pretty good specifics.
And the proof will be in the, the next torrent.
Yes, our, the street department is really excited about that. It's gonna give us the tools where we could actually do better paving programs.
Expedientiously.
And, yes, and preventative maintenance as far as crack seal, so.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah. If I may add, what, I, I also am very excited because from what I understand, the paver that we bought some months ago is gonna be delivered fairly soon. And so with, along, along with all the stuff, we're gonna have a really great arsenal of tools at our disposal for the Public Works to tackle a lot of these like low level stuff that we could, we could take care of really quickly. So I'm, I'm super, the paver's gonna be here soon, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I, I can give you guys a, a quick rundown of some of the equipment that's been ordered and, and tentative, and I'm tentative to delivery dates. The, the paving machine, that's been moving around a little bit, but it sounds like it's supposed to be delivered in October of this month, okay? Our 10 yard dump that's currently being built, city hasn't had one in 18 years, that's gonna be a huge asset to our, to our team. The delivery date estimate is January of 2024. Five yard dump that's gonna be replacing an older truck, we're expecting delivery on that one, which is currently being built in December of this year. So there's some real pieces that are coming together for us very quickly. And with the trailer replacement that we're asking for the skid steer, so you guys have a little bit better of an understanding, the current trailer we have is about 50 years old. It's small and it's very heavy steel, so you can put a lighter load on it. The one that we're looking at, we can put our brand new roller and our paver on it. It's lighter, it's new with good brakes and we can tow two pieces of equipment instead of one to our job site, which is gonna give us even a little bit more flexibility and some more efficiencies.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
The flock, it's good brakes, I'm glad that we have.
Well, they're, they're just modern. It's not there's anything wrong with the brakes on our trailer now, it's, it's a 50 year old piece of equipment.
What were you saying about the other one? It's like, ah!
Didn't mean it that way, sorry.
Anyway, yeah, the flock system, where are we at on that? The license plate reader, the gunshot hearer thing, where are we at on the deployment of that?
I will follow up with, with the chief, but I know they are installed and they were going through, I think it was two weeks ago I asked him about it, and they were going through training on how to best utilize it, so it's.
There he is. The flock system, just, it's on the list of, of capital expenditures, I was kinda wondering where we are in deployment.
It's completely installed now and it's going through the training process, people are giving access logs to it. We actually used it the other night to track a vehicle of, of interest in a shooting.
Wow. Has it been molested?
Not that I'm aware of.
What? There was a report.
It could be repressed, but I don't know.
I can't breathe!
So it's, it's okay.
No, 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 we've had no damage to it or vandalism.
There was a report.
Yeah, there was initially.
An allegation.
Well, initially, they did put a camera out, they didn't even know it was theirs because the right hand wasn't talking to the left hand in their company and this thing was deployed to do some topography studies and things like that to see how it worked and it was, that one was actually destroyed. We did recover the equipment.
Okay.
Not to our cost.
Not to our cost.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, I have two more questions if you don't mind, one, one more for Fred. Isn't the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the five yarder, isn't it like overheating or something too, so this is gonna be a major addition to the fleet?
Well, our, our five yard currently, it is, it was constructed in 1990. It's, it's got several years on it. There's a couple of issues with it. It, since it's so old, it's no longer compliant or becoming non-compliant with the diesel exhaust.
Yeah, carb compliance.
Yeah, and the particulate filtration system, we can't get one for that, for that truck. So, yeah, it, it's gonna be a, a nice tool for us.
Yeah, that's excellent. Then the, the last question I have is for you, now, as often happens after these meetings, and I'm sure every council person up here can testify to this, I will hear this a lot. Boy, you guys are spending a lot of money, right? And, and what, what I, what I'd like to, you know, this isn't dipping into like, this is all budgeted items, this isn't like ripping into, you know, general fund dollars or nothing like that, right?
Correct.
Like, so I mean, okay, just, I just wanted to clarify that for anybody that might be listening because I've heard it way, almost every single time that we buy something, I get feedback from somebody, boy, you guys are just on a spending spree. And I'm like, well, we're buying, you know, the things we need, so.
I would say that this is really starting to slow down. I think the last couple of years, we had a lot more than this. I really feel like the requests this year were actually less.
Yeah, because they've been being fulfilled.
Yeah.
The previous council did an excellent job in doing that.
Yeah, the list just looks long because we're not getting the things we, we ordered.
Yeah.
So they're carryovers.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
Ruth, I have a question. Can you pub, I'm so sorry. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Real quick, okay? Can you publicly say that, so that the public can hear it, that this is all allocated for already and that we're not spending and overspending or we're not going into the red?
Yes, correct. I think we will have some funds left over after this year.
Thank you very much.
If I, if I can just tag along with, with Ruth, so this is, this is the, the capital assets request, again, you've already approved many of these, these are, are included in the budget and in future years, I know we're, we've talked about this, we're, the idea here is in the past, it would come, I don't wanna say nickel and dime, but one here, one there, we're trying to be more planning in the head, so you know what we're planning on spending this year and in future, the idea is to bring this actually with the budget. The money was approved in the budget, we just didn't have the list to give to you comprehensively finalized yet. So the money was approved in the budget when you adopted the budget. Now we wanna say, okay, you approved this, these dollars, here's what we're recommending to spend them on.
And may I add to that? Some of these expenditures are specifically to save money. So is there a cost for, you know, crack sealer? Well, absolutely, but it's cheaper than hiring a company to come in, you know, what, 300,000?
I, I heard 330, I think, or something like that.
So, you know, anyway, there's, there's rumors that in any city in Orville is not innocent. The rumor mill, rumor mill is very active, especially it seems at coffee shops and whatnot, so.
So just, just along with this, in, at a future meeting, at the next meeting on the 19th, you'll be hearing some information on road projects that Fred and I have been working diligently on to give you, again, money's been budgeted, so we're gonna say, okay, here's what's budgeted, here's what we recommend spending that on. And then at a, probably in October, we'll bring back an update on, on more capital projects for our, for our facilities. And again, all three of these kinda components, capital assets, capital projects, roads, our goal is to actually bring those forward with the budget in future years.
Thank you, Ruth, and I think it's, it's important to have a list such as this because we're in a world right now, if you order something today, the expectation was you'd get it tomorrow. Well, that's just not happening. So this is kind of a ru, running list that'll tell us, you know, we've got things in here ordered years ago, frankly, and we're just waiting on those parts to arrive. So it's important to know that and I appreciate the list, it's a great idea. Okay, any other questions? Did you have?
Yes, I just wanted to bring back to remembrance, membrance prior to 2016 for a number of years, the city was in the red. Approximately $1.8 million deficit every single year for a number of years. We worked with the skeletal crew, we laid off, we froze benefits and salaries, we asked our employees to pay a certain percentage of their own benefits. Equipment was worn out, it was antiquated. I mean, the roads, we could not fix, we could not do any of the expenditures, the capital assets that we are doing right now. It's been a long time coming and we have to thank you for approving measure you dollars and that's why we're able to do it. So when you, you know, we hear that we're spending too much money, this has been a long time coming, you ought to congratulate yourselves. Thank you. I mean, really, I appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Well said. With that.
We see an action on that.
We see an action.
Oh, action, to approve the list? Okay. I would entertain a, do we have to approve the list? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, motion to approve the capital assets list.
Motion in a second. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item is the number 11, contract amendment for the city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, your, the council gave staff direction to the city attorney's office to prepare an amendment to the contract for the city administrator, which is per the traditions of the city with respect to new employees who come on board after a six month period. And in this particular case, following a, a mid-year performance evaluation conducted for Mr. Ring and his successful completion of that first six month period. So this contract amendment adjusts the salary from step E at 2,004, 365 per year and the only other change is, is that it advances it to step F on the department head salary schedule with the annual salary of 214, 583 and that is effective September 5th, should you ratify this, this change. And so I'm happy to take questions or you can move forward and entertain a motion after any public input.
Well, I will add that the gentleman received a very positive evaluation from this council and just leave it at that.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggs?
Resounding yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yep.
Councilmember Goodson?
Amen, amen.
Councilmember Weber?
He's okay, I guess, yeah.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pittman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Public hearings next. Any public hearings today? I don't think you have any.
we have any.
There are none.
None. Okay. Uh, we have this next item is a public communications hearing on non-agend items.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did have one card submitted after the first round, so this one is for Renee Gramps.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
All right.
Thank you again for letting me speak. Um, I'm going to read this time, so I'm not so jarbald. How much, how much time do I have on this?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. All right. Okay. Um, emergencies. Emergencies and disasters are never situations anyone wants to happen, but unfortunately, and usually, usually when we least expect it, they do. These emergencies can vary from individual personal events, city or community events like our spillway, um, or our local deadly and damaging wildfires, all the way to the tensions that are building around the world. Well, September is National Preparedness Month. Um, so I have questions, and I don't know if you guys can respond quickly, or I'll just start here. So one, I was wondering if our city has an emergency plan or different emergency plans depending on the scenario, and does the public have access to these basics or the basics of it? Um, two, do we have a local emergency alert warnings in place for situations? Three, do we have emergency evacuations routes in place? I would say maybe per per what they call districts for our city. Um, that came up because of obviously the kind of the chaos that happened during the spillway situation. Um, and obviously, then I think about what happened in Paradise. Uh, four, I was uh on our city website and I didn't see any info to help guide people in case of a local emergency and was wondering if we could, uh, if I could challenge you guys to consider maybe updating the website. And lastly, um, are we hosting any National Preparedness Month local events? I know that uh there is stuff on FEMA that I believe that you could easily um get materials and what have you. If we do happen to get something that um can be put together before the end of the month, I'm willing to volunteer to help because this is something that's near and dear to me. I mean, everything from um, you know, just breaking down on the side of the road, making sure that you've got water and, you know, whatever you need for your car, all the way to obviously, you know, um, bigger severe situations. It's, I think the more people that are prepared, the better we all are. So.
Thank you.
Is there any, any opportunity for any of those questions to be answered, or is that something that we would?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to comment. So the county does have, and uh maybe our administrator might have more to say on that, uh, Mr. Ring, but the county does have a code red notification system. You can go on the county's website. You can sign up for, and so the county is the lead agency that does handle that for our city. Uh, there may be more to know in that, but.
Yeah, there's a code red notification system. I think you're, I apologize if I make an assumption. I believe you were referring to like what Paradise is doing with the with the alert system up there for fires?
Yeah, I guess all the above. Just, um, yeah. So I didn't know if that, because I know there's obviously probably some situation with the county, but I didn't know if there was something implemented just for our city.
I know there's, we have a inundation maps here, I know, at the city level, and it's, your timing is perfect. I was just looking because I, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with a number of people on just emergency preparedness, both at the county level and other jurisdictions here locally. So it's one thing that I think we could certainly update our website.
Yeah.
And that's not only in in this area. It's it's been on our radar for a couple of areas. We need to probably get more current on that, so.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other non-agend items? No?
None submitted.
None submitted? All right. Next item is future agenda items. Council, have any suggestions for future agenda items?
I have one.
I do, too.
Okay. Eric spoke first.
Yeah, so we have received a letter from Hutton um regarding the build out that we just celebrated with the Caltrans, the beautification of the off ramps. And there's some concern about um the portion of that fence. And so i- if we could put that on the agenda to perhaps have the city uh engineering or, you know, reach out to Caltrans and have a conversation. Um, I didn't notice it because in the letter said, if you drive an F-150, yep, that's me. Right over there, but my wife, who drives a Prius, yeah, it's a problem, uh, challenge. And so, you know, just maybe we need to have some expertise, look at that. And I don't know, come from council, give some direction, that type of a thing.
Do you want, do you want staff just to to look into that and provide counsel with an update? We can certainly do that.
I think that's, yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you wanted something to agendaize or just.
Well, I don't know if it needs to be, but just some direction.
Yeah, just.
Is that an Orde dam or Montgomery 70? Where's the?
Montgomery.
Montgomery, the off ramp to Montgomery and.
You have to pull up.
Do you have something further? I have.
Yeah.
Sure.
I actually had a conversation with Caltrans about that down there. The s- the short suggestion was moving the stop bar farther into the intersection so people could see. It may be that simple. I I don't know. But it is a Caltrans issue.
It is.
That might work.
Just move the stop bar farther into the intersection so they can see.
Paint the line.
Yeah, that's, that's all we're talking about, so.
And I guess there always a thing on something like that, you appreciate what they did. You know, they spent a lot of money and we want, I don't want to come off not being appreciative, but at the same time, it is, you know, obviously, there's some concern with the public safety.
I also failed to mention that we had a nice uh ribbon cutting ceremony down at the Riverbend Park. And Caltrans was very appreciative of the city staff helping out with that project and the fact that the Dan Rivers from Rainforest Project provided the students to do the artwork. Interestingly, they're trying to do a similar project at Chico, and Chico wasn't helping them with any artists. So I sug- I introduced the the director to Dan, and it looks like Dan's going to be doing the artwork for Chico, so, with this Chico student. So it's a very nice thing to be done. Um, Janet Goodson, you had something?
Yes, I believe that we are long overdue for an update on the Gateway Project.
Okay.
We're meeting on that, I think, on Wednesday. This, actually, tomorrow is, tomorrow as well. Man, good timing on all these.
Okay, cool.
Praise the Lord.
All right. Any other councilman?
Yes, I.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I know I I spoke with uh Vice Mayor Smith about this, but I, I spoke with Vice Mayor Smith about this. Um, and I'll bet you uh the entire council is probably gonna a- agree to this, but I would love to look into, um, we just paid honor to um the lady of Bu County, um Alberta Tracy. And she, I mean, what a dedicated service, as as you pointed out, 40 years at the Eman House and many, many other things that she did. I would love to look into us, um, actually, um, paying for a memorial, like a placard, and um, and putting it at the Eman home. And now I initiated conversation with um the Bu County Historical Society, and of course, it's got to go to their board. But um, I would love to, you know, you know, you walk up and there's a memorial plaque and a picture and a little bit of a bi- a bio on the person. I would love to, I'd love to do that. So I'd love to, for us to entertain that. I I know I talked to Vice Mayor Smith about it, and he, him and I both agreed that her legacy should be honored. Um, I would also, like, I got a note here, on the heels of everything, I would, I would really like to uh entertain the idea of getting Hardy Land to come and give us a a presentation regarding branding as well. Um, I would also like to look into a graffiti removal task force um and purchasing some um graffiti removal uh apparatus that that makes sense, that's um easy to use. Um, and then the last thing I would like to look into is a uh local preference in bidding and contract. Uh, let me explain what I mean by that. Um, I was actually talking to Ruth about the carpet because um Ruth asked for some input from from me because, well, I've been installing carpet my whole life, so. So um, regarding all the carpet that's in the city hall, and and we were talking about um, you know, the local providers that we have here. There's two of them, uh, which is Carpet Warehouse and Carpets Glor, which are both extremely reputable and good companies. And um, I was expressing that I would love to be able to see us give uh like a a preferential, you know, like, it's local company, local money, keep it in the economy. And so um, I would like to initiate a conversation and talk about that. Now, are you aware of anything like that?
Yeah, uh, so you can have a local preference ordinance that's passed as long as it fits within certain constitutional parameters that allow you to um, you know, help disadvantaged firms that are in, you know, within your city limits where, you know, they may need a little bit of uh assistance in um being competitive in your local projects. And so um, we can certainly uh, you know, look into bringing forward a a local preference ordinance for you that kind of would fit those criteria.
Yeah, maybe not like for everything, but maybe, you know, maybe when it comes to particular things like, you know, um, like, for instance, the flooring as an example, or construction projects or something like that, to to, you know, to try to bolster our people in our city.
Well, certainly. And, you know, the key uh aspect to this is that your, you know, the people who'd be participating from your local area, uh, you have to make certain findings with respect to um, you know, whether there is a disadvantage to them in that particular bidding process. So you'd be able to potentially create an ordinance that allows the council to determine on a contract by contract basis which ones are really appropriate for local bidding and which ones aren't.
Okay, thank you.
Could I?
So I.
Go ahead.
It's interesting because, well, now, specifically for this project, we know that the the two carpet competitors are not disadvantaged. They're not at a disadvantage. But um, I would think that the process is generic in terms of the RFP is put out um for everyone. There's no partiality or favoritism, right? So I, me, I'm a little hesitant in a process like that and and ordinance, because then you start opening up the public perception that there is something um manipulative about that process to give other people an extra advantage. And that's not the picture that we want to present. And then, of course, if you do for one, you do for all. Um, but that's just my uh take on that.
All right.
Go ahead.
Just, just to add to, um, now that we have a community development director when it comes to economic development, um, and that's been a a personal kind of frustration is in this process of RFPs and not having enough local participation. So perhaps your office in your new seat, again, direct, giving direction here, but uh to do some sort of seminar or local training, because as you know, there's a lot of steps to become a a a business that can then legally, you know, then participate in the bid process. So maybe there's some work the city can do to help our local small mom and pop shops with some training or some direction. I don't know if that's something that's appropriate, but I think that would be helpful to engage in that process. And I think that's something probably you could probably head up. Maybe.
The um, right, we could, I could do a workshop for for people to do that. The a lot of times, because public projects legally have to be done by prevailing wage.
Right.
And the reporting requirements, the paperwork that goes to the, it it knocks a lot of people out, that they just don't want to go through all of that. They don't have the wherewithal to to do that and then to do the the labor reporting. So it's not just a matter of necessarily giving them preference, but um how, I guess, sort of giving them capacity to be able to do all the other work. So we could take a look at some way to do that.
Yeah, the navigation, just.
Navigation, right.
Yeah, some instruction. It'd be great.
Yeah, maybe some FAQs on what it takes to submit a bid for a public project or.
Yeah.
And we can certainly look into maybe the criteria and on the the requirements for some sort of a, a what qualifies as a disadvantaged employer when it comes to making the bids.
Well, let me just clarify, you know, being disadvantaged is one example of um sort of a rational governmental interest or legitimate governmental interest the way by way or through which you might rationally provide a local preference. Uh, so it it just has to be um related to a legitimate government interest if you're going to do that with respect to your local bidding process. So one example is they're disadvantaged because you're a smaller town and bigger competitors exist outwards that can handle things like prevailing wage and all that stuff. Um, but that's not the only reason. So just, it's just a pretty often used one. So, uh, but the answer is, yes, you can bring forward something for you to consider in that area.
All right. Any other future agenda items? Then if none, I will uh adjourn this meeting for the next regular meeting. The Orville City Council will be held on September 19th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. We are adjourned, folks.
Excellent.
Recording stopped.